Good evening and welcome to the Old Colony School Committee meeting of October 21st, 2020. My name is Aaron Polanski. I am the Superintendent Director of Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. And at this point in time, I'd just like to read through the list of people who are in attendance at tonight's meeting before I turn the meeting over to our chairperson. This is Shirley Burke, John Denzel from Carver, Gary Mansfield from the Town of Lakeville, Isabel Darcy, our student representative from the Town of Carver, Shirley Burke, Chairperson from the Town of Rochester, David Hughes from the Town of Rochester, Steve Cassidy from the Town of Mattapoisett, John Williams from the Town of Carver, Richard Demage, Town of Mattapoisett, Don Foster, Town of Lakeville, Robert Marshall, Town of Lakeville, Maurice Saint-Damein, Town of Akushnet, Justin Broder, Town of Akushnet, Nancy Souza, Town of Mattapoisett, Sharon Cruz, Town of Rochester, Bethany Vitello, Vocational Coordinator, Joanne Pushkar, Town of Carver, Katie Tuchanardi, Academic Coordinator, Mike Parker, Principal, and Johanna Kaufman, Data Coordinator. Thank you very much. Jolene Costa is here with us as the Secretary to the School Committee. Phil O'Neill is our Technology Director and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Shirley Burke.
Thank you, Aaron, and welcome everyone. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of reflection for what will be in the next two weeks that we have a safe and peaceful election. Thank you. Aaron, would you like to introduce our student rep?
I thought I would be honored to. I would say almost a little bit more than three years ago, I had the opportunity to meet Isabel Darcy as she walked through our front doors as a freshman. She is now a senior in the CAD drafting program, currently on co-op with Griffith and Berry in Wareham. Senior class president, first in her class of 2021, member of the National Honor Society, the Non-Traditional Club, the Student Advisory Board, Old Colony's championship volleyball team, and Skills USA. Outside of school, Isabel is also a competitive dancer. It is a wonderful honor to introduce Isabel tonight to the School Committee. I think we are blessed to have her in our presence. She is a responsible, mature, driven, focused young adult, and she will be a wonderful representation of Old Colony as she serves in this role as Representative to our School Committee. So I'd like to welcome her and thank her for serving in the role.
Impressive presentation. Is there a place on the agenda for her to speak?
I promised her that tonight would be an introduction. That if she would like to say something, she's more than welcome to at this time. And then moving forward, we'll plan together and she'll be able to pull the student body and see what their interests are.
So I'm leaving it to you two whether is there anything you'd like to share with us or?
Not really. I'm just really excited to involve the student body because especially my class, but more the underclassing. Because the changes we make here are more likely going to affect them than say my class, which graduates this year. And I already think of Colony as a great place, but there's always room for improvement everywhere. So.
Excited to have you. Welcome. Is there any public participation? Hearing none. I will move to the consent agenda. I'm waiting for the meeting of the items and looking for a motion to the consent agenda as presented.
Stuck in the motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, have your packet. Your operating statement. Is there any questions? Yeah. If there's any questions for us, we can hold it off until we're done. But without other questions. Good on the operating states. The warrants are available. Review. Go on the routine status. With no old business, we're going to move directly to the new business and the Skills USA Leadership Conference.
But the Skills USA Leadership Conference is being run remotely. However, given the nature of the space it's being used in our building right now, we're not in a position to house students in a common area for attendance at the conference. As a result, we would like to have the students attend the conference from the Rosebrook Event Center in Wareham, where they would be appropriately socially distanced in a room that is clean and prepared for them, where they would attend the conference remotely just minutes from here. We're asking permission from the School Committee to allow us to pass them over there and allow them to attend remotely.
Second, can you further discussion? Thirty questions. Hearing none. I think the motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? A move. The superintendent salary. Aaron, he was given the option of whether he wanted to decide in session. We saw no point in it. This is a percent increase. I know that we agreed with Aaron that we would be looking at a salary on an annual basis and never exceed figure in his contract. This is what was budgeted. So he's looking for this to come forward.
My recommendation at this time would be to table it until we're done with negotiations with all bargaining units.
Second, we're done with the motion. To table the discussion. Do you want to talk a little about your rationale?
It's hard to get out without the parameters and executive session. This isn't a slight at Mr. Polanski. I don't disagree that he doesn't deserve the increase, however, with certain points that we've taken away from negotiations and certain angles that have been shown. I think I could say that without violating it. I think it would be in the committee's best interest to hold off on any increases of salary to contractual personnel outside of the bargaining unit at this time until negotiations with all bargaining units have been completed.
John, in your estimation, is there some outcome you would expect from the negotiations that would impact this motion?
There's a potential.
John, John's in a difficult position.
I'm not asking too details. I was just really, the answer is yes. There could be some outcome.
Yes. Yes.
About second, do you want me to support our bargaining? Kind of doing these predictions and questions that can be supported in their endeavor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm having a real hard time catching a lot of the audio. Some of it is clear and some of it sounds like it's in an old wet sock.
So what didn't you catch?
Excuse me? No, I think I caught the gist of it, but it seems to be degrading as the meeting goes along.
I agree. This is Nancy. Madam Chair, the audio is not like it was last month. This is very difficult to follow. This is Nancy. Again, I just saw Justin's chat messages about there's a TV in the background.
Yes.
That may be, you know, interfering with, I don't think it's the total issue, but it is making difficult to hear.
Can you hear us now, Nancy?
Yeah, that's a little better.
I'm hearing Nancy very clearly, yet Shirley and John and even Dawn were a little bit, I don't know, difficult to make out some of the words.
Yeah, it kept going in and out. I can hear you, Bob, clearly as well.
Yeah.
I'm having the same issue. I'm hearing everybody who's in remotely very loud and clear, but everybody in that meeting room is tough to hear.
Can you hear us now?
Is that better?
I can hear that clearly, Aaron.
Yes, me too.
Act a little bit more.
Okay, we have a.
My question, my follow-on question to John is when do you think that we might then be able to address this question?
I would hope with being, with being as optimistic as possible, I would hope by December.
Madam Chair. If that is the case, will it be retroactive?
I would, I would say would be, for me, I would say it would be retroactive without objection.
I would think it would be retroactive as well.
I'm not asking to, I'm not asking to forego any increase. I'm just asking for it to be foregone at this time due to what's been going on in negotiations.
Thank you.
In due respect to you, John, and anybody else, I think at this time we should continue on and vote for the pay raise simply because, as I'm concerned, at this time I'm voting on the merit of the individual. I know that you had said that you have some issues coming up in negotiations, but I don't think that this should be part of it. I think we're voting on what's accomplished on the individual. When you get to an negotiation for others, that's a different story. This is totally different.
We have a motion in a second to table this motion or to table the request for the increase. I'm going to take a vote on that if there is no other discussion on tabling. All those in favor of tabling? Should apply by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose?
I oppose.
I oppose. I oppose.
Okay, the request has been made for a roll call vote. Okay, so I am going to just, oh, can you do the, I'm sorry, because I don't know if you can do the remote. Yeah, maybe. No, we'll do the in-house discussion.
Or I can just go through each name and mark it down.
Okay.
Denzel?
Yes.
Mansfield?
No.
Burke?
Yes.
Hughes? Cassidy? Williams?
Yes.
Demage?
Yes.
Foster?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
Saint-Damein?
Yes.
Broder?
Yes.
Souza?
No.
Pushkar?
Yes.
And are we missing anybody? The chair was here. She had to go to a meeting unfortunately. So the motion passed.
Yeah, this is something to revisit. John's a question on Aaron. This is a commentary on the process.
Madam Chair, if I may, it, it, yeah, it hurts to actually make this motion because it's no indication of the job performance or at this time, if it's just a strategic move that I felt that we had to do as a committee. So it's not personal.
Information from the School Committee, the chat review. What we held a meeting with all of the town file.
Madam Chair, I can barely hear that at all.
Yes, yes, that, you know, who is the favorite votes proceeding. And I raised my hand. Majority of people, yes, for us to continue on our venture. We're going to have a. You can't make it out, Bob? We're going to have a meeting October 27th, October 27th with Free Town. To recap law, if you can hear me, we met in town officials. The one league discussion took place in the pros and cons of Free Town joining the district. We talked about buy-in and what buy-in was going to be. There wasn't anybody overly opposed to the dollar amount. There were some comments, but those comments, I think, went by the wayside. It would be with that lot. The overwhelming consensus was for us to move ahead and approach Free Town. So the theme of the night, the town official wanted us to just take this vote through an invitation to Free Town to join. And then we'll have that discussion with Free Town and we'll see where they want to go and how we move this forward. Some of, some of the discussion was tied into how Free Town would see a building project as we move forward. But there's no way to dictate at this time to Free Town that if they join, they have to approve the building project because I don't think any of the towns can say unilaterally that they will support that same project. I think the best we can do is inform Free Town of what our plans are in the future, that we are very interested in a building project and see where that is. But we can't move forward without doing something on the 27th. And Free Town has asked Aaron a few times, where are we in the process? We need to show them that we are moving forward in the process. As an aside, Carver Kaden TV is broadcasting the meeting. I watched part of it. It's about information how Carver.
Just for clarity and maybe a bit for my clarity, we're not going to offer Free Town the opportunity to join. We're going to say this is where we are. We need the approval of five towns before we can go back to Carver, to Free Town and say, everybody approves. Are you willing?
If I may, I presented a slide that will bring clarity to this. Could I present that? And I think it will, for everybody here, probably answer some questions in terms of that question that I anticipated that may come up.
I was concerned about the notion that we would be offering them an opportunity, but I think that's maybe a little bit too strong of a word.
This is the slide that I prepared to answer this exact question. This is really a sequence of events. Old Colony tonight is voting to extend an invitation for Free Town to join the district, so to speak. But what then happens at that point in time is that they will say to us, either they are interested or they are not interested, right? It could go one of two ways. If they tell us they are not interested, it's the end of the issue. If they tell us that they are interested, we then, to Mr. Foster's point, need to go to our member towns. Once we have a response from Free Town, and our member towns then need to vote. When our member towns vote, we need a unanimous response from all member towns to support the request from Free Town in order for the Free Town request to be approved. So if Free Town tells us no, if after tonight we vote no, the situation ends at that point. If tonight we vote yes, the offer goes to Free Town. So we are in essence offering Free Town an invitation dependent upon the vote from member towns unanimously in support of a Free Town addition to the district. Does that help?
It helps me a lot. I mean, I understood it that way. I just think legal reasons, we should be really careful of how we present the words.
Yeah, absolutely. And for that reason, I.
I keep reminding people, and Bob, I think Bob would remember this too. A hundred years ago, Lakeville got hauled into court because of Mr. Chromis somewhere in a town warrant. Am I right, Bob?
That is true.
So little things can have, and I, you know, I'm the comma guy.
Absolutely, yeah. And I.
Little.
Very good point that you made.
Little things can have really distasteful impacts sometimes. We need to be very careful.
And I think this will be the discussion for Free Town about what they will be looking for in year one, all of those, the conditions.
They have all that spot and drop.
Have you seen their presentation?
I do not.
No, it's.
Okay, I have not. I want to see Neil.
It's right to car. It's enormous.
Yes.
Does this have to go to a town name or is it the board of directors?
It has to go, it has to be a.
Town name.
All five towns have to.
And it has to be unanimous.
Correct. Well, this is how I do it with the five towns. All five towns need to approve. One of the concern has always been, Free Town has kind of come to the table and backed away at the last minute. So what we're trying to do is, okay, so please take this for a while. This is what the conditions are if you are interested in joining the district. If you're going to block at any of those issues or you have concerns about it now, I'm going to speak as we move forward. We would like to know that if we're going to take this, we need to vote that at the end of the day, we're going to take our word.
I think we also need to be thoughtful, and maybe this is not the time to vote, but we need to be thoughtful. Once we start talking to Free Town plus five towns, we have exactly the same message. We can't be changing. We can't be revising the package we're trying to sell as each town has a little bit of input. It has to be the same town to town.
And I think initially what we have voted the current five towns is that should Free Town join the district, they will. Because there was some thought about can we restrict the eligibility of getting to Free Town. The thought that was no, they were four members. They enjoyed full rights, which means all of the, all the five towns could be obviously impacted by now taking more Free Town kids and maybe more than the traditional twenty to twenty five. Distorted. So in that sense, we are trying to do it.
If Free Town says yes, their students, there's a present we have to cut overnight. We just give their students the want to come into Old Colony advantage to get in a little bit earlier before the.
That has to be discussed right now. Member students and the Department of Education would actually have to approve something and allow a waiver for that to happen. But that would be part of conversation with Free Town as well. But as it stands right now, it's a very clean delineation. The first step is to vote tonight to extend an invitation. If the committee votes to extend an invitation, we go to Free Town. Free Town then tells us if they're interested or they're not interested based on the cost of a buy-in, which is just over $600,000. They also would be responsible for transportation in year one, the changeover and transition period of time. And then after they tell us they are interested, at that point in time, we would pursue a conversation with our member towns. It would be on their respective warrants for town meeting. And we would be making presentations to each of the towns to provide clarity around the pros and the cons so they can make an informed vote. Once the towns get a unanimous agreement from the towns, I want to present the petition for final approval.
How long does a week make the whole process before it's completed?
We've had a conversation about this, myself and the chair. If the towns were to run their regular town meeting, it would take place in the spring. That's when the towns would approve it. And then it would go before the Commissioner of Education prior to December of the next year. If the towns were to call special town meetings, and that would be up to the town, it could be expedited prior to December of this year and go before the Commissioner in December of this year. But again, that would be up to Free Town to orchestrate that if the number of towns not up to that.
And I think Frank, I think that would be difficult to consider that this is an election year. The town courts are bombarded right now with what they need to do to get the election secure and achieved. So I think that it is a too small a window when you're talking things in Christmas, everything else to get this accomplished for this current. The Commissioner has received notification by December.
Which actually roughly two years.
Well, if the town, if the approvals at the town meeting took place in the spring of 2021, the Commissioner would likely approve the request immediately following, which would allow their students access at the beginning of 2021. The flip side of this is that the decisions around the transition period, which is this coming year, would have to be included in part of an MOU or MOA because as was indicated earlier when Mr. Foster spoke, there have been times when Free Town has come to the table and then what I've been told is stepped away from it. So those types of things have to be sorted out.
Madam Chair, I think that special town meetings are very expensive. And Steve just brought up a great idea also that if we go to special town meeting and one of us votes for it, then we just wait until we're approved. I think we're better off at the end at some point.
I think it was difficult for all five towns to do a special, get the special done before this ends.
Yeah, you have to remember the special town meetings for certain interest articles. And it brings people just for that. I think the annual is very important because it brings everybody to the town meeting, not just.
Aaron and I had had a conversation because Rochester would be having such a.
Yes.
So that, you know, it was like, okay, there was some confusion whether anybody anticipated that this would be on the warrant. It was locked on. Everybody clearly understood at this opening meeting that this probably would accomplish this December that we were talking about.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the recommended...
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to invite the judge down to have the discussion on the twenty-seventh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Anyone abstaining? Right. Admissions, uh, tour.
Well, just an update relative to the admissions process. We are running our open house, which typically has large numbers of people, uh, virtually, that will take place on Sunday, November eighth, through virtual, uh, media. And we're setting, we've already begun recording videos, we keep the shops, we'll have a live component and a pre-recorded component. Folks who aren't able to join us for the live open house virtually will also be able to do a recorded version of that, uh, so we will be preparing that in the weeks to come. Our request this evening is to allow for small numbers of people to register for tours, uh, where they could tour the building, uh, in conjunction with Mr. Tragan. Again, small groups appropriately socially distanced with, uh, tracing available and appropriate preparations in place, uh, so that we can appropriately give people a look at what it is we do in person. We feel as though the benefits of that, um, are really significant for us.
Right, fine.
Move to a room.
Okay. You have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No, okay. I know BP is doing virtual, uh, tours pressing the signs out. Okay, the, for the administration, the census. Student census.
So we have five hundred sixty-two students, that's about number one, attending Old Colony. Uh, that's an increase of, I believe, I have to pull the paper, certainly. It's an increase of sixteen, uh, from last year. What we did see, what you can get, it's a pretty serious, for the town of Pushnet, where they have thirteen additional students, and the town of Lakeville, who has ten additional students, Carver has three additional students, uh, Matta Poisa, which has six additional students, uh, and Rochester saw a decrease, uh, in items by five. And Free Town went from ninety-one students to sixty-eight because we were unable to accept any freshmen from the town of Free Town in this incoming class. So we have, uh, had conversations with Lakeville already about the difference in numbers and have plans to reach out to Pushnet, information about the increased enrollment to the community to prepare accordingly. Obviously, we don't have specifics relative to actual assessment or budgets, but we do want to let them know that there's been a significant increase. I spoke to Richard Campbell, uh, yesterday about the increase.
Um, admissions related events in Kepa. I know this is, uh, going to be a community year, recruiting kids.
So we are on target, uh, we're right where we were last year, right, right about where we were last year in terms of admissions. We do, we have a daily tracker, so I think we're only behind last year by about eight students. Our admissions video was updated recently. We're also working with Fun One O Seven, we have a couple of commercials that are out, and we're, uh, doing some Facebook advertising. In addition to that, Mrs. Patale recently organized a virtual STEM event with Ford Middle School and a Pushnet. Uh, we're doing some outreach with some of our other middle schools as well. As we mentioned, we have the November eighth online virtual exploration, which we're looking forward to, and we'll be meeting with area guidance counselors from our sending middle school on October twenty-eighth, give them enough to be relative to the process. Uh, we're optimistic, but also understand that the inability to have the large group in like we typically do with the big four, um, doesn't help us. So we're hoping that in-person people hold smaller hallway doors will help. Uh, and we're appreciative of Mr. Training and Debra to orchestrate that. Additionally, just a, a next bullet in the agenda, we will be featured on a national webinar on WGBH, uh, on November tenth at seven PM, for the efforts that we put in place with Madison Park last year, and that will be a continued effort this year. But we did receive national attention for that, WGBH, and asked us to, uh, join Madison Park for the, um, national webinar.
Were there any students in conversation?
No, it actually, I had to ask, we definitely asked for it, we would, uh, interact with one another as part of something we did earlier in the school year, we agreed to do that, represent Mava, they had not asked for it, so we could certainly recommend that. I think it's a small question, they said it would be around fifteen, twenty-five minutes.
All time, on, on national, even if it's WGB. Um, that's the admissions, um, we have all, all the five stepping towns, the schools are now cooperating?
All five districts actually, uh, sent us labels and email addresses. We're very grateful, they sent us email addresses so that we could reach out to the seventh and eighth graders. Uh, we have a program that allows us to send out, uh, large-scale communication, I did include the school committee yesterday, just to see the example of what's sent out. You enable your, uh, visual pictures, sometimes if you don't, it might come up and you just look like a small message, but if you allow for the pictures to show from your email, we'll open up to, uh, a promotional team to send out some things for all of us.
Any questions, uh, comments for Aaron on admissions? Hearing none. Mike, if you're there, the newsletter?
I am here. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. The newsletter this year is, uh, taking on a new look, uh, trying to get more interactive with videos and things. Uh, I want to give a special thanks to, um, Marsha Bativia, who has, uh, added her expertise to, you know, let us do this, and also my, uh, administrative assistant, Danielle Craig, who continues just to work tirelessly to, to, to make things better. So we're excited about this, and, uh, this will be the format that we'll, we'll continue to use throughout the year.
So the presentation is good?
Yes.
Mike, uh, any, any questions for Mike on this newsletter? None. Quick thing, Mike, I was wondering if you could just talk about, uh, the ongoings of school and what you're seeing and how kids continue to react to, uh, the hybrid model?
Yeah, sure. The, um, you know, the in-person, uh, kids, we're just finishing up this week with our, um, nine eleven students. Uh, the freshmen have settled in amazingly. Uh, you walk into the shops, they're all smiling, they're all having a ball, even the kids that, you know, obviously probably don't have the first choice in shop, I've, I've never seen any of them, uh, interacting as well, which is, you know, kind of interesting. Uh, the upperclassmen are, are just continuing to work, um, like nothing happened. Um, our online kids are doing very well. Uh, we've been tracking the attendance and making phone calls on a daily basis to any student who has missed a class. We've had great, um, support from the, from the, um, from the families and the parents. And our in, our in-person academics in, uh, in the library, we've had a little bit of fluctuation, some kids have come in and they've done well and they've gone back to remote, and we're bringing in additional kids who are struggling. Uh, so it's, everything seems to be going very, very well. Um, like I said, they've all settled in and just cross our fingers we can continue to do what we're doing.
So Mike, there's a constant tracking of the kids and how successful they are?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, as we would in, in a normal school year, um, you know, matter of fact, I was down in guidance and they were all pulling out the DNF reports and contacting parents. The teachers have been incredible, uh, as far as, you know, making, making contact with the, with the families. So we'll continue to track, um, and again, especially we're, we're making tons of phone calls to people who are missing classes, because, you know, if they fall behind, uh, you know, as we've spoken before, they, they have to keep moving forward, and, uh, the rigor that the teachers are putting forward, um, is, is tremendous. So I can't say enough about the staff at this point.
Any questions, Mike? Hearing none, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, you have, um, teach business on, on, on the week dates, uh, charter review is on the twenty-seventh, budget is on the twenty-eighth. Um, and we will meet again, uh, as the whole school committee on November eighteenth, where our student record is going to engage us in this wonderful conversation. Um, anything else?
The charter review meeting is with Free Town, right?
Yes.
We should press on.
It is, uh, for the charter review subcommittee. Any, anybody is, should they want to come, is more than welcome.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, be there, witness it. Is it gonna be remote?
It's, I don't even know. It's scheduled to be in person.
Scheduled in person. Okay, thank you.
Remember people could, like Bob, I'd like to be there.
Well, need to be careful that school community members who attend are not participating, that they are, they are wired for observation purposes, uh, and as part of the audience, the participants on the school committee, we need to be careful about giving the appearance that they have worn on the school committee.
Uh, I'm sorry, Shirley, careful of what, please?
Yeah, I have the impression that we have a form of a full school committee.
Okay, thank you.
So that we need to be careful that anybody who's not on that subcommittee is there as an observer only.
If we go virtual, it's...
Shirley?
Joanne.
Sorry, I am a member of that subcommittee, but if there's not going to be a hybrid option, I won't be participating.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. We can, um, discuss it? Because I don't know if we, if the intention of Free Town is that everybody is going to be here?
I think they'll all be here, but if a member of that subcommittee needs a virtual panel, we just need to know in advance that they're reporting.
Okay, um, if we have, if it's, I guess within our realm, we will try to put this on virtually for anybody who wants to observe. Um, I think the intention at this point is that, um, Charlotte, Joanne, that the participants on the school committee members, uh, will probably be there, but we will try to do what we can, um, for again...
And it's not a session, it will be broadcast live on Facebook.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, i- i- if, if we are gonna have a remote option, I think that's great. Um, but this audio has got to get resolved, because many of you are, are still muddy, I'll call it, uh, and there's a little bit of dropout as well.
I think, I think Sarah's the best on the microphone thing. There's so much, I can hear it in the speaker here, there's so much feedback from people not being muted at home, but I think it's affecting the quality of the microphone here. Sarah just messaged it, and I think that's the case, if I can, you'll be, be a ton of feedback in the speaker here.
Everybody's muted at home. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, this is Nancy, uh, I can see everybody that is at home is all muted, so I don't think that's the, the issue. Um, I, I can see it in front of me here, where everyone that is remote at home, if I'm looking, it's, they're, they're all mute, they're all muted, so...
They are now, but they haven't been throughout the whole meeting. I mean, I've been hearing a lot of feedback. I'm sitting right next to the speaker and it's like...
We're at a point that we're close to the, the end of the meeting and the conversation, that we might be able to have a trial, to see how we might be able to do a better draft, as we continue to move forward with this, this is extraordinary times. Uh, I think everybody here is trying to do the best they can, uh, but, uh, we understand that obviously for the participants at home to be fully engaged, they need to be able to figure out what is going on, to do our best as we move forward. Okay, is there anything else? You have a business tonight? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn in, in a second, all those in favor?
Yep. Aye.
You want to oppose, anybody wants to stay a little longer?
No.
I don't think I can, so, everyone, good night, thank you for joining us.
Shirley, Shirley?